Good evening. Hello, if you could all please take your seat. I am Manny Kowalyn. I am so honored to be the executive director for Inspire Washington and the advocate for science, heritage, arts in our community. Thank you very much. And on behalf of our organization and our board of directors, I welcome you to our 2023 King County Candidate Forum. Inspire Washington acknowledges that we and our partners statewide are on the homelands of native peoples who have lived in this region from time immemorial. We pay respect to their elders, both past and present. We also acknowledge the traditional custodians of the lands where all of our cultural partners live and work. Currently, there are 42 tribes, 35 of which are federally recognized, that share traditional homelands and waterways in what is now Washington State. Some of these are nations and confederacies that represent multiple tribes and bands. Inspire Washington recognizes and respects all of them. We express our deepest respect for and gratitude towards these original and current caretakers and cultural bearers of the region. As a cultural sector, we acknowledge our responsibility to establish and maintain relationships with these tribes and native peoples in support of tribal sovereignty and the inclusion of their voices in teaching art, heritage, natural science, and providing cultural programming. We pledge that our relationships will consist of mutual trust, respect, and reciprocity. Inspire Washington acknowledges that here at Town Hall, we are on the homelands of the Duwamish tribe in the interconnected lands of the coastal Salish people. Inspire Washington is your cultural advocacy organization. We exist to serve every state community from Spokane to Squim, from Kennewick to Kitsap, from Wenatchee to Watcomb, and right here, King County. We serve communities by supporting all of you, our cultural partners. You are the ones that inspire Washington communities every day with uplifting programs. Inspire Washington's advocacy coalition combines and focuses the energy of thousands of people and organizations and businesses that provide science, heritage, and arts activities and experiences to every one of Washington's 281 cities and towns. As we start this cultural conversation tonight, I want to highlight that we are more than the people gathered here today that fill these chairs. The cultural sector is representative. We are hundreds of businesses across King County. We are thousands of creatives and cultural workers and labor unions. We are tens of thousands of volunteers and supporters, and we serve millions of audience members, students, patrons, and other participants. We are a big interconnected community, and we make King County vibrant, beautiful, and alive. Cultural programs are service-oriented, and they're community-based. We are here today because communities from Shoreline to Algonah, Vashon Island, Tisner, Kwame Pass count on our quality-of-life programming. We bring joy. You forge human connection. We also drive local economy and serve as the catalyst for our partners in human service, education, and public health, just to name a few. With our partnership, these partners succeed. According to the National Bureau of Economic Analysis, creative economy represents 10.8% of the state's GDP. I imagine that percentage is even higher here in King County. We are essential to Washington State's economy and the anchor that keeps us competitive in the emerging modern markets. All of this valuable community-centered work is threatened. For us, the pandemic isn't completely over, and we need further public partnership and investment so that we may fully recover and so that our businesses may thrive. And we also need more incentives so that we can really address the barriers of access to ensure that every community in King County, every citizen, every family, every child, benefits from the uplifting power of science, heritage, and the arts. Whoever wins in November will be a leader in this work. They will be our partners in charting King County's cultural future. So we are really thrilled to have this conversation today so that you may learn more about their views on cultural work and so that we may all look forward and see the path that leads us to a brighter cultural future in King County. So clearly, we have a lot to talk about tonight, but we're going to start with some inspiration from tonight's artists. I would like to welcome Seiya Pham to the stage. Seiya is Seattle's first Vietnamese-American youth poet laureate. She is the author of "Love Like," a poetry collection on the multitudes of love and the depths of the Vietnamese-American experience. Her poetry has been featured in Seattle's Child, on KUOW, and the University of Washington's The Monologues. She is born and raised in Seattle. We bring a lot of creative people here, but it's really special when we have somebody that we raised here in the cultural sector. She is a graduate of our University of Washington with her studies in political science. Let's warm up the stage for Seiya.
Hi, how are we doing today? Awesome. I'm going to shift over here, but I wanted to introduce the poem that I'm going to be performing. When mother came to land, she, in her hands, carried nothing. The motherland, a lustrous wreck of war, the girl in the picture, running, burning. If only my grandmother understood the things she photographed with her eyes. My grandfather tinkering with a piece of copper, his calluses, a topography dated back. Do we know if he is smithing a bomb shelter or a boat full of stars? Mother comes to land with a displaced daughter, carries across the shore. And she, dreamer of dreamer of landlocked shores, brings children along until years later. I come to school with a backpack of water so dense you could have her paint the sky red or paint the sky blue too, or learn to catch fire, to latch onto this art form. But instead, we say, teach her to latch onto this art form and not this burning body. Maybe sail her back to Psychon before it ends, because how do you explain heartbreak to a kid? How do you console us who have lost our loved land, looking back over shoulders at a mother that does not properly exist today? I come to school with questions. How do you still hold me from the other side of this shipwrecked song? How do you mend a beat of sky, paint the sky red? How do you explain that my Asian-ness is for aesthetic purposes only, not to be tragedy to any further? Recall that many words are dead in my tongue. I cannot English my way back into a first language, but I can at least vernacularize grief through this verse of art. So when it is my turn to kiss the water, breath like a phone on hold, you ask me to write. And I tell this story not because it hurts or because I want to illustrate the art of burning, but because I want to say, thank you. You taught me how to catch fire, how to take a passion project and fan the flames, how to paint the sky red. For when it is my turn to kiss the water, breath like a phone on hold, you ask me to write, a part of myself I cannot see. You say, writing is just like boat making, and maybe, maybe, just maybe, this art making could save me. So for the first two decades of my life, I build a boat and sail it to the center of the ocean. Sitting silly in a fourth-grade classroom, light spills into breath makes voice the same way Mrs. Freeman guides us into what I now name artful liberation. She says to brainstorm, and so I do. I dance into tsunami, poeticize hurricane, synthesize the storm, which is to say, in the aftermath of a thousand senders, we will paint the sky, ma sen. Because did you know the ocean is blue only because the sky is? That when I come to class, I paint the ocean blue and the sky too. I paint for all who swim outside these shores, who build boats and life jackets and floats, boats big enough to carry our dreams to shore, boats big enough to carry our reckless imagination. That it is because of this port language that I arrive at this pier, where the same hands before me held nothing. The boat full of stars I hold are burning, so that when I look up, I see that I have everything. Thank you.
My goodness, I have so many pictures in my head. Boats big enough to carry our dreams to the shore. What a beautiful idea. Thank you, Seiya. That was amazing and gives us a lot to think about. Just a reminder, Seiya will be selling her new book, which just came out at the end of the forum, so you can purchase them over at her table right there on the side. And also, I encourage you, get a drink. We're going to be here a while. Enjoy yourself. All right. To get warmed up, I want to explain to you how we create this event and kind of the way that we're going to be guiding your evening tonight. Now certainly, I've been doing this work for a while, and I have a lot of ideas, but it's not about my ideas. Inspire Washington believes in all of our leaders, and we know that the ideas and the conversations, really, the richness of that really is within our leadership. So we convene. We convene this event today. We create a space for us to have this conversation with some leaders that we've worked with and also with all of you as audience members. So we identified a variety of diverse leaders that do programs in science, heritage, and the arts across the county, and what we asked them to do is form teams. Really make this an inclusive opportunity for you to reach out to the cultural community within your district. One thing I think we can all agree on is that culture is unique to place. And whether you're in West Seattle, or in Queen Anne, or in Bellevue, or in Newcastle, or Mercer Island, and on and on throughout the county, that culture is specific to the place there, and there are unique characteristics of cultural programs all across King County. So we asked our district captains to really form a team and really draw upon them to get the ideas about what they wanted to talk about, to identify themes and threads and challenges and opportunities and topics that they all could agree on, and we asked them to come up with three to five questions. We're going to try to get through as many questions as we can today, but in the issue of fairness, we're going to make sure that we keep this moving around. So each candidate will start off by being given three minutes to answer each question, and we will rotate through who goes first. Jessie, in the interest of fairness, because we support a fair process, will time each candidate's answer and will hold up a colored flag, which corresponds to how much time remains and how much more time the candidate has left. The green means keep talking, share everything, tell us more. The yellow flag means that the candidate has one minute left, so wrap it up. And the red flag means you got 15 seconds, so wrap this up and we're going to be moving on. Jessie will cut off candidates at the end of three minutes so that we can stay on time and make sure that everyone on stage has an equal opportunity so that we may support a fair process. If your questions in the audience are not answered, at the end of the district segments, there will be an opportunity for the audience to ask questions to any of the candidates. So you will have that opportunity, and there'll be a microphone. That one right there, they'll be placed there in the corner. I will moderate this part, and I will do my best, and please be patient with me, because I want to make sure that if we have a certain amount of time left, that we have the same amount of questions for each candidate, so all of them have equal time at the microphone. Any questions about this process? All right, but really, you know, this is not a debate. This is an opportunity for us to really get to the heart of each candidate's cultural views and their platform and the opportunities that are before us. I also want to state too that Inspire Washington does not endorse any candidate. This is a voter education event, right? We know that, but you are all voters, so we are certain that you will have opinions, but we are not here to promote or endorse any candidate, and you will not see anything like that from us afterwards. We simply want to stimulate good conversation, empower our leaders to spotlight important topics, and for you to walk away feeling like you know more about where they stand on issues of science, heritage, and the arts. All right, so at this time, I invite each of the candidates to join me onto the stage. Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you, thank you. All right. At this time, as they get settled in, I want to tell you what's next. I'm going to invite each of the candidates to take two minutes to introduce themselves, and Jessie will be timing them with her flags as well. We do have one candidate, Teresa Moscetta, will be arriving late, so we will reserve time for her later to provide these same remarks. Is everyone settled in? All right, and I first would like Sarah to introduce herself.
Thank you so much, Manny, and thanks to Inspire Washington for having us this evening. It's great to see everyone and be here. My name is Sarah Reinaveld. I'm running for King County Council position number four to follow in the footsteps of our arts champion, Councilmember Cole Wells on the King County Council. We are blessed in District Four to have a rich, vibrant, brilliant arts, cultural, scientific community, and we need to do more in King County to ensure that we're following in the footsteps of Councilmember Cole Wells and building a brighter and more equitable future for the arts, for the science, and culture. And I want to be that champion on the King County Council. I am an Assistant Attorney General. I am a working mom. I am a public sector attorney, as I said, a transit writer, union member. And for over 10 years, I, as an Assistant Attorney General, have fought for wages and protections for working families and held environmental violators accountable. And in 2016, I became Councilmember Cole Wells' appointment to the King County Women's Advisory Board, and since that time, I've been working with communities across King County to secure funding and affordable housing, behavioral health, services for survivors of gender-based violence. I want to take that leadership and create tangible solutions to address our homeless and behavioral health crisis, to expand access to the arts and culture in King County, and transit, to ensure that we're connecting all of our communities. I also want to make sure we're getting a cultural access program over the finish line to ensure we can connect all of our communities to arts and culture and science in King County. I am honored to be endorsed by AG Ferguson, Hillary Franz, and many of the Democratic organizations, as well as Councilmember Cole Wells, and I look forward to this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Reinaveld. And next, candidate Jorge Barone, please introduce yourself.
Thank you so much, Manny. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jorge Barone. I use he/him pronouns, and I'm honored to be a candidate for District Four and the King County Council. A little bit about me, I'm originally from Colombia. My family came to the United States when I was 13. I didn't speak English at the time, and I was bullying in school because of that. I'm also the proud parent of three children who've all gone through the public school system here in Seattle. One of them is a trans daughter, and for me, that's really important. And those experiences in my life have instilled in me the importance of confronting injustice and the experiences of, centering the experiences of marginalized communities. And for the last 20 years, I've been working on behalf of those communities in the immigrant rights sector. I was the director of Northwest Immigrant Rights Project for the last 15 years, up until June, and now I have this opportunity to hopefully pursue local elected office because I believe that we can do a better job here in King County of improving the lives of every resident of King County. I'm honored to be here in this community because the culture and the arts has touched me in so many different ways. Growing up, my father is a producer in Colombia in the television industry and promoted the arts there. I worked for five years in the film industry in Los Angeles before I pursued a legal career, and all of my children have been involved in the arts. My daughter is now hopefully pursuing a career in theater. She's very involved in musical theater, and I'm hoping that she's going to be able to go to college and pursue that soon, so I'm excited to be with all of you. I'm honored by the support that I've received in this campaign. I have received endorsements from both The Seattle Times and Stranger, but most importantly, I received the majority of support of people in District Four during the primaries, so I'm honored to be here and I look forward to the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate. Next up, we have King County Councilmember and candidate Claudia Balducci.
Thank you so much, Manny. Good evening, everyone. My name is Claudia Balducci. I currently serve as the elected councilmember for District Six in King County. That represents all our parts of Bellevue, Kirkland, Redmond, Mercer Island, and the Points Communities on the east side. Prior to serving on the King County Council, I served on the Bellevue City Council. I think you know where I was going with that. Thank you. You know, so I'm running unopposed for reelection. It's going to show. I just want to tell you. Little out of practice at this campaign business, but I want to tell you, what I want to tell you most tonight is, I come by my sincere, deep support for expanding access to arts and culture very, very personally. My husband and I adopted a kid when I was on the Bellevue City Council, and when we met Victor, Victor was two and a half years old and had a list of developmental delays and disabilities as long as his baby arm. And we didn't know how Victor was going to, like, what Victor's life trajectory was going to look at age two and a half. They were 16 pounds, couldn't walk, couldn't talk. And so, among many, many other things, we put Victor right away into as many cultural opportunities as we possibly could. Victor went to Kids Quest Youth Museum. We were there constantly. We went to, Victor has been a lifelong participant in youth theater northwest and a variety of other opportunities. And today, my junior in high school, 17 years old, was telling me all about the new glass-blowing class they're doing in high school and concert choir, and I just wish I could show you like a time-lapse photography of the look on this kid's face, engaging with music and art and science and water, and the curiosity that grows, and learning about people and how to be with other people and grow relationships, not just talk, but sing and dance and love and all of that. It was miraculous to us, and what I want as an elected official is for every kid to have those opportunities. Every kid, no matter where they come from, no matter how much money their family has, what language they grew up speaking, what disabilities they may or may not have. And we have a tremendous opportunity. This fall, sorry, the red flag's been up for a while. You see, I'm telling you, out of practice. We have a tremendous opportunity that we're going to talk about later. Thank you.
Thank you very much. What's really wonderful about us hosting these type of events, although sometimes people approach it thinking we're going to disagree, I actually believe that there's a lot of things we agree on. Can we all agree, every kid, right? Every kid. All right. Moving on, next we have our candidate, Teresa Moscetta. To introduce herself, please.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and apologies for coming in late to my friends and fellow coworkers who've been in this work for a long time. It's great to see all of you, and it's really good to see all of you, though the lights are bright up here, so I might be straining to look into the audience. I'm Teresa Moscetta, running for King County Council, and I've had the privilege of serving in the city of Seattle for the last six years. Before that, worked at the Washington State Labor Council, and before that, worked on healthcare for all in many realms, C-Mark Community Health Center, Department of Health, Community Health Network of Washington, Children's Alliance. I see the investments in art and culture in the very same vein that I approach public policymaking. Every investment in art and culture is an investment in our public's health. It's an investment in community health and well-being. It's an investment in the mental health as well as the physical health of our community. I'm really excited to be here. I say the pleasure of working in Seattle over the last six years, but really specifically during COVID and the response to COVID, I was pleased to be able to work with my colleagues to put funding directly into the arts and cultural sector to support the creative industry and specifically artists. We know that in Washington State alone, $35.6 million is the total amount that Washingtonian artists and the art culture lost due to the impact of COVID, and that was only in the first year. We know just within the first year, $35,000 was lost per organization within the first year. And now here we are, over three years later, and the impact continues to spiral, and we see ever more the importance of investing in art and culture, because as we come out of our homes and we come back into community and we think about how to create a healthy community, it starts with art and culture. Cohesion, social cohesion, and making sure people can connect again. It's good for the mental health, the physical health, and the economic health of our local economy when we invest in workers and the creative industry. Looking forward to chatting more.
Thank you very much. And our last introduction, candidate Sophia Aragon.
Thank you very much. Hi, everybody. Good evening. I'm Sophia Aragon. I'm the mayor of the city of Burien and one of the candidates for council District Eight for King County. And I'm a registered nurse and attorney by background, and I'm running for the county because I would want it to be a safer, healthier, and more inclusive place than it is now. And when I'm your councilmember, I want to focus on proven common sense solutions on crime, homelessness, public health, and the environment. So as an immigrant child in the Philippines, I grew up in South Seattle, and I've seen firsthand our community's biggest challenges. I was fortunate to have access to quality healthcare, affordable homes, and also music education, all encouraged by my mom and inspired by her. That's why I'm a nurse today. But countywide, communities are struggling with public safety, and especially true for our most vulnerable communities. It saddened me to see the vandalism that happened at the Wing Luke Museum, and we deserve fast response when something happens like that to our cultural treasures. And so as mayor, I did work to increase law enforcement that we need, and representing communities is important. There hasn't been a councilmember with Asian descent for over 40 years, but we have a lot to be optimistic about. We do need to have more equitable investment in the arts, the value of the arts to the economic sector, we can draw people to downtown and interact with each other. If we make our cultural spaces safe, we can engage with each other again and regain that connection that we had before COVID. And I'm also hopeful for a conversation about, given the lessons we learned during the pandemic on the different ways we can connect, how could we turn that into more support for our arts community? So looking forward to the conversation.
Thank you very much for that. So now, I'd like to welcome our first district team to the stage. We are starting with District Four, which includes Seattle Center, parts of downtown, Queen Anne, Magnolia, Ballard, Green Lake, and Northwest Seattle. I'd like to welcome Adriana Wright to the stage, who is a speaker for the District Four team. Adriana is the Education Partnerships Manager at Seattle Theater Group, as well as a board member for Inspire Washington. She grew up in Tijuana, Mexico, and graduated from Cornish College of the Arts with a BFA in Dance. She is a choreographer, a dancer, and a teaching artist, and has worked at the Seattle International Dance Festival for On the Boards, Northwest New Works, Velocity Dance Center's Bridge Project at Cornish, and the Southwestern Community College. As a teaching artist for various community education programs in the greater Seattle area, she teaches creative movement and adaptive dance for public school students at early childhood centers and for other enrichment programs. Let's welcome Adriana Wright.
All right, hello. I'll be asking some questions for District Four. Our first question is, District Four is home to the largest number of cultural organizations in the county. We are regional economic drivers, creating revenue opportunities for neighborhood businesses, rideshare drivers, hotels, restaurants, and bars, and remain very committed to the economic health of District Four. If elected, what, if any, policy changes will you pursue to help us continue to contribute to the thriving District Four community? We'll start with Ms. Reinaveld.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for the excellent question. So as I stated before, District Four is really home to one of the most nationally renowned and vibrant arts, cultural, and creative communities in the nation. And if elected, I'm going to be a champion on the King County Council for expanding access to the arts and culture in King County. As we stated before, I think our arts and cultural organizations are really still struggling, and we need to do more to ensure that they're recovering after the pandemic. I've talked to so many arts organizations that are even in Council District Four, from the ballet to the opera, science and cultural organizations, and we need to do more to ensure that they are not just in our communities but are thriving. So I am going to be a champion for our cultural access program. I'm hoping that I will have the opportunity on the King County Council to actually implement that program. And what that'll do is not just ensure that operationally our cultural and scientific communities in Council Four are thriving, but that we're also doing more to expand access to those opportunities for everyone in our access to those opportunities for everyone in our community, for underserved communities, BIPOC communities, elders, seniors, youth, to expand access to everyone. I grew up as a ballerina, as a ballet dancer, and the arts had such a transformative impact on my life. I think that we know that the arts and cultural community, particularly in county, King County creates hundreds and thousands of good-paying jobs. In King County alone, the arts-related businesses account for 8,000 businesses, and there's actually 3,400 jobs, or 3,400 jobs that are generated just from arts-related organizations alone. We need to make sure that we're doing more to not just sustain those cultural and arts businesses, but to make sure we are ensuring that they can create those good-paying jobs, union wage jobs, and also ensuring that we are, ensuring that our cultural economy, which is made up of our restaurants and businesses, is thriving. So I think that's critically important. In addition to that, you know, I think that we have an opportunity to connect more folks within King County Council to our cultural and access organizations. And I want to do more to ensure that we are connecting everyone in our community. So I think we need to absolutely pass our cultural access program, make sure that it's funded, and generate more revenue for great arts organizations and the good-paying jobs that they create. I think equitable access to those good-paying jobs is going to make all the difference in Council District Four.
Well, I think, you know, as Sarah mentioned earlier, both of us, I think, recognize the important role that Councilmember Coels has had in supporting the arts and being a champion for the arts. And I think both of us are committed to continuing that legacy, because we recognize the importance that the cultural organizations and the arts play in District Four and throughout the region, and that we have a special responsibility to make sure that we're supporting that. And I see that a lot of the issues that all of us are working on, as somebody who worked in the nonprofit sector and led organizations there, I've seen how the struggles of making sure that we have access to a workforce that is supported. And I think that's also true for the arts and culture, and making sure that those organizations are in a position to be able to provide living wages to the members of the arts community, and also to make sure to have other forms of support. I was talking to one, and I can't see you right now, but some of our colleagues here who are here and talking about issues like, for example, the lack of affordable childcare and the challenge that presents for people to be able to enter and to be in work. So the challenges of transportation, making sure that we have a transportation network that's going to make it accessible to us. We're conscious, for example, that District Four, of course, as a place that has those cultural institutions, we need to make sure that we're building an infrastructure that's going to allow people to enter and access those locations from other parts in the county who have a special responsibility to make sure that there's access so that people can get there. And I appreciate that Councilmember Balducci here has been working very hard with, on the Sound Transit Board, to make sure that that happens. I think we also need to make sure that we are providing those investments and that we build the future stable sources of revenue. And one of the things that I've been articulating throughout is that we need to work together to make sure that we're identifying, in the long term, progressive sources of revenue to make sure that we can continue making those investments in all of the important things, all of the essential services, including culture and arts funding, to make sure that we have stability in the long term, while at the same time, making sure that we are doing so in an equitable fashion and that is not placing disproportionate burden on low-income people. I need to remind everybody, we have the most regressive tax system in the state, and we need to make sure that we are working to make sure that the support for arts and culture also is done in a way that is not going to exacerbate those disparities, and that when we use resources that might do that, that we ensure that those resources are going to open up access to marginalized communities who have a more difficult time accessing cultural and arts programming. So that's something that I see as a responsibility, to make sure that not only the people in District Four, that people around the region are going to be able to access all of the wonderful work that happens within District Four.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing up transportation, because that's the next question. District Four cultural organizations are excited for the expansion of Sound Transit, and we look forward to patrons and employees using public transportation to access our institutions. At the same time, the construction of the downtown-to-Ballard line will be incredibly disruptive for many of us. If elected, how will you support District Four organizations and businesses during and after construction of the ST3 stations and tunneling?
Well, thank you. I did get ahead of the question here. Well, so this is an issue where I think we need to find the right balance. This is a complicated issue. And the way that I like to think about it is to make sure that we're engaging with people in the local communities and organizations that are here locally that are going to be impacted, because we need to balance the very understandable concerns about short-term impacts, and, you know, when short-term, I think we're still talking about years, that construction may have, with the very long term. And in that case, we're talking about decades and a century of infrastructure that we're building with our Sound Transit infrastructure. And so, it's not a simple answer, right, to be able to address that balancing. And I appreciate, again, you know, that my colleague here is working on those issues, and that we hope to be in a position to be able to inform that. And if I'm elected to the seat, I plan to advocate on behalf of the organizations and the people of District Four to make sure that we're finding the right balance, that we're doing the engagement to identify the best balancing of making sure that we address the short-term concerns. But again, I also have to think, I think, as an elected official, that we have to be conscious of the future and not just think about the people who are going to be impacted today, but how the ridership and all of the people who are going to be moving literally decades from now. And I think it's also important for us to consider the benefits that it's going to bring to our region and specifically to areas that are in District Four and places like the Seattle Center, for example. The ability, if you think about all the people who might be able to take light rail from, you know, south King County, to be able to just easily make it to the Seattle Center, for example, and be able to access all of the richness of cultural institutions from the east side as well. The fact that we're going to be, we're getting close to that point and that we're going to be able to make that access better, that's going to have a huge benefit to those institutions that are in that region. And the important thing is that we try to find the right balance through engagement, through meaningful engagement, through the institutions being attentive to the concerns of the organizations that are going to be impacted, and that we work together as a community to find the right balance between those short-term disruptions, but the very important long-term benefits that the Sound Transit expansion is going to have for our district. And I certainly hope that if I'm elected, I would love to be part of the Sound Transit opportunity. Obviously, we'll have to work that out if I get the opportunity to serve, because I want to make sure that I'm a voice in whatever role I would be to be able to articulate the concerns of our district residents into that process, which is going to be really important for our community.
Yeah, this is an excellent, an excellent question. And I am running to be a transit leader. I am a transit writer. And I think, you know, we need to do more throughout our light rail-to-Ballard extension to ensure that we are connecting all of our communities to fast, safe, reliable, convenient transit. And that means elevating community voices, and as Jorge was saying, really weighing the long-term benefits of these transit opportunities to connect our communities long-term versus the short-term disruptions. And that means elevating community voices. It means listening, and it means engaging communities from day one. So I think it's important to point out now that unfortunately, we don't always have connectivity to our arts and cultural hubs, either through our metro system or obviously Sound Transit yet. Unfortunately, a lot of times, you'd get out of the opera or the ballet, and you can't be connected to transit. Maybe it's not safe, maybe it doesn't get you where you need to go. And so, when we're thinking about designing transit long-term, we have to elevate the voices of transit writers and ensure we're centering them in the discussions. And my concern to date, and why I want to serve on this Sound Transit Board, is that the Sound Transit Board, I think Claudia and others are doing a great job, Councilmember Balducci, but not everyone's doing a great job, I think, of elevating community voices. And so, you know, I think we need to ensure that as part of that process, that we are engaging with community. And what does that mean? I would love to see a community member, a transit writer, on the Sound Transit Board. I would like to see meetings on the set that are more accessible to folks, that center writers' voices, and that are more responsive. And I think one of the instances in which, you know, we can center community voices more, even in the context of Council District Four, is when we look at stations and kind of weigh the benefits, as well as the maybe short-term construction impacts of stations like our Seventh and Harrison Station. I mean, that's potentially, right, an opportunity to connect our community to hubs, particularly cultural access hubs like the opera and the ballet, but it's going to have pretty serious short-term impacts. So I think we need to have really robust community conversations around what those short-term impacts are, how we can mitigate those impacts, and through an equity lens, really make sure that Sound Transit is involving those community voices so that we can invest in long-term hubs that connect our community and transform our transit system to make it accessible to everyone. I'm also interested in doing more to speed up Sound Transit delivery, and I think my time's up, but I think it's really an issue of involving community voices, centering those conversations, and moving towards a long-term vision for Sound Transit access for King County.
I just want to say one thing, and I apologize for jumping in. Thank you. I am on the Sound Transit Board. In fact, I chair the committee that is making the, you know, recommendations about the light rail expansion. So I just want you all to know, if you want to have any conversation about specific concerns or issues, please approach me afterwards or email me at my office. I'm happy to have those conversations. I didn't mean to break the, but I'm right in the middle of it, so please do contact me.
And Councilmember Balducci has been a leader in that regard and is doing an amazing job of centering community voices.
Thank you. All right, I have one more question. We very much appreciate governmental support for, of our capital projects. However, we could build the most beautiful, sustainable, and accessible buildings in the state, but it means nothing if we don't continue to activate them with rich, mission-based programming, which we have throughout King County, not just in Seattle. How do you envision a future where King County is able to offer ongoing operating support as well as capital?
Yeah, this is an excellent question. So as I stated before, I mean, there are a lot of sources, including for culture and other sort of sources, of operational support in King County. But we absolutely need to get a cultural access program funded and over the finish line to ensure ongoing operational support. Unfortunately, you know, many of our arts organizations, our science and cultural organizations took a hit and are still recovering from the pandemic throughout King County. And we need to have their back at this moment in time. And that means approving not just a cultural access program, but making sure that we're really extending that funding in an equitable way so that everyone throughout King County has access to cultural access programs. And that means, you know, our schoolchildren, that means our youth and elderly folks, that means disproportionately impacted communities, BIPOC communities, that means, as Councilmember Balducci was saying, everyone. So I want to stress that this is the opportunity we have now. I have unequivocally been in support of this cultural access fund, and I want to make sure that we're getting it over the finish line. I have talked to so many arts organizations, including the ballet and, you know, the opera and others, about what this ongoing operational funding would mean to them. And it's critically important that anyone that is elected to the King County Council not just support it, but ensure that we are implementing it in a way that is equitable and sustainable long-term. I also want to point out that I think it's critically important, and King County has provided access to the arts for our schools. And there are several sustained sources of funding, and, you know, organizations also provide that source of funding, including STG Theater Group, and really engaging our kids. And, you know, I have two kids in the Seattle Public Schools. My little guy just went into kindergarten. My older daughter is nine, and I was just at their Friday sing, and they love the arts. You know, they're engaged in the arts. I want every child throughout King County and throughout our state to have access to cultural and artistic programming. It's so critically important from an equities perspective and from an anti-racism perspective to ensure that we're engaging all of our youth. And I also, I think it's critically important that many of our cultural access organizations, as well as our theater houses, the opera, the ballet, that sort of thing, provide those programs. And so, without the cultural access funding, we're not going to be able to continue to provide those programs for our communities, including our youth that need them most.
So as I said in the beginning, I am committed to making sure that we have robust funding for arts and cultural organizations. And for me, you know, as I said earlier, my daughter had the opportunity to be part of the Seattle Children's Theater Program and just have seen, for her, what an important institution that was for her, her development. And the way I think about it, as we've been talking about, I just want to make sure that every child in King County has access to that, regardless of where they live in the county, regardless of their, you know, immigration situation, regardless of where they're from, that we have access for them the same way that my children have been able to benefit from those programs. And I completely agree that we need to find the funding sources. I think the issue that I'm concerned about at the county right now is that, you know, I think Councilmember Balducci can then talk about more too, is the unsustainable, it's unsustainable, the current way that we're funding all of our services across the board. And we're facing $100 million shortfall in the general fund that's affecting very critical programs, like programs like public health. So we need to be tackling those issues as well to make sure that we're protecting all of the services, because none of us, right, in this community, including people, artists, and of people who work in the arts and cultures, are going to be better off if we're disinvesting in those critical programs that provide important support for us in the community. So I want to make sure that we're thinking about all of those issues and making sure that we work together with our state legislative partners to really, long-term, shift the way that county services are funded to make sure that we can not have, be in the situation of having to disinvest from those services. In the short term, I recognize that right now, the avenue that we have to be able to provide critical support to arts and cultural organizations is through a mechanism that the legislature approved with the sales tax. And as I've said, I am concerned about the regressivity of that, but I'm willing to support something if we can make sure that the benefits of that regressive form of revenue goes to support communities that have more limited access to arts and culture. And so, for me, that's going to be really important in considering that. Obviously, I know the council is working on that right now, and I'll respect the decision that the council makes. But if for some reason this gets pushed over into next year, for me, it's just going to be making sure that we can justify the extra burden that we put on low-income communities with a regressive form of revenue, to make sure that we are providing and providing the bulk of the benefits to those communities to make sure that they have access to the same wonderful work that our arts and cultural organizations do throughout the county. Thank you.
Thank you both, Candidate Reinival and Candidate Badon, and I will be seeing you later, I'm sure.
All right. Yes, thank you so much to Adriana and for her team for District Four. You know, we do a lot of advocacy for all of our great communities across the state, and we know that our stories are authentic. When we tell lawmakers that these areas, these districts are cultural capitals of the world that do significant work, so I'm so glad we had this conversation, we're having this conversation today. Before we move forward, I want to recognize that there are audience members out in the Zoom sphere that are watching today, and we just recognize you're there. Thank you for tuning in. We got a lot of your emails asking for the link. And we also are really thrilled with our partners at Seattle Channel and with Town Hall that will be sharing this link so that people who will watch this in the days and weeks to come. Next spotlight is District Six, which includes Bellevue, Mercer Island, parts of Kirkland and Redmond. I'd like to welcome Putter Burt, the captain for District Six. She has been the CEO of the Kids Quest Museum in Bellevue since 1999, which serves over 225,000 people, many of them very little, every year, welcoming families from King County as well as Nahomish, Pierce, and Kitsap Counties, and visitors from across the country. Putter has over 30 years of experience Putter has over 30 years of experience serving in leadership roles at a variety of children's museums across the country. As a leader in the museum community, she has partnered with the city of Bellevue, Boeing, Amazon, Microsoft, the Association of Children's Museums, and the Northwest Association of Youth Museums. Putter is active on the boards for ACM, Eastside Pathways, Bellevue Downtown Association, R. Inspire Washington, Washington State Leadership Board, and Visit Bellevue. Let's welcome and warm up the stage for Putter.
Thank you, Manny.
I'm going to break this. I'm just a little taller. All right, here we go. Our first question is about the creative economy. Creative economy practices are activities or methods used in policy, research, programmatic, or funding spaces that are designed to amplify and advance the inclusive creative economy in local communities. What steps have you taken or do you plan to take to ensure geographic funding equity for nonprofit art sectors on the east side? Thank you so much, Putter. It's really great to talk to you tonight. Yeah, this is, this is an important question. So leading up to this year, as part of COVID funding and a variety of other things, we were able to help to keep doors open at number of organizations across the county and including on the east side during COVID. But that was one-time money. That was federal money. It's gone now. We also invested some general fund money, I want to say $1.9 million, into an office of the creative economy and the executive's office. That was very unusual. And I'll tell you, I asked some questions about it because general fund money is the only money we have for many things that are, that can't be funded another way. But it seemed important to sort of kick off this initiative, and it's focused on the film industry, the music industry, and then generally creative spaces. And so that's, that's an interesting thing that we're, that's just newly launched at King County. But the big opportunity that we have, and it's going to come over from the executive as a proposal in the coming days, is Cultural Access Washington. I know many of you have probably worked on getting us to the point where there's laughter, where we can, where we can take this up, this proposal. It's been a dream for almost two decades to start a cultural district here in King County. And this is the year. We're going to do it. We're going to do it. Thank you. It's, it's super exciting. And we will be, as part of that debate, talking about, how do we make sure to sustain this amazing cultural hub that we have largely in District Four? That is, that is there for everybody? And how do we provide the access to everybody to get to those amazing, big, regional cultural places like was talked about? But we also need to spread the wealth around so that we can sustain cultural institutions in South King County and East King County, so that we can innovate, grow, and sustain smaller, culturally diverse, all kinds of different experiences. There's an opportunity in East King County at the 130th Street Station at Sound Transit to build a Bellred Arts District. That's in sort of the, in between Bellevue and Redmond. Tons of small, little organizations out there that you'd never know were there, but it is an arts district, a naturally occurring arts district. How can we, how can we support that, publicize it? These are real jobs, real experiences, and they can help to support the economy, not just the creative economy, but the capital E economy. So I am delighted to be, have a chance to work on this year. I hope we hear from all of you all in our offices saying, please pass Cultural Access.
Thank you. The region's elected leaders are constantly debating about the right amount of money and attention to direct to homeless shelters versus housing. Do you believe the region has found the right balance? And if not, which side of this equation do you think needs more emphasis?
You know, thanks for that question. I was asked that question for the first time earlier the last week, I want to say. And there's really only one answer to it, and there's not enough money for either. Really, there isn't. And both are completely necessary. Housing is a continuum, right? There are people who need a home, who do not have a stable home at all, who are living on the streets or couch surfing, or living in a car or an RV. And then there are, there are many people, tens of thousands of people in all of these categories, who are housed, who have a roof over their head, but are one missed paycheck, one broken-down car, one medical bill away from losing that roof over their head. And every time rent goes up, and I forget the numbers, but I'm going to guess it, every time rent goes up, I want to say by 10%, a certain, like, fixed, knowable number of people become homeless. Like, it is predictable. So these things are absolutely tied together. And in my time on the council, I have worked very hard to try to lift all of these issues up and address them all in a variety of ways. I'm very proud of a location-based thing we've done in East King County. We have opened the first-ever men's homeless shelter, never been a permanent men's homeless shelter in East King County. Think how big that area is. We opened the first one after 10 years of work two weeks ago. But it's not just a shelter. Because the county was able to come into this project with 10 acres of property, we also could build permanent supportive housing for people who are coming out of crisis and stabilizing but still need supports, and 323 units of affordable family housing where people can live who are able to work and make enough money, just not enough to live in Bellevue. And so this is the answer. The answer is all of the above. It's about mixing people together in a community space, but it's about scaling that solution up. And there's a couple of things we have to do. All of our jurisdictions, all of our cities and the county are going to be updating their comprehensive plans next year. They need to make room in the comprehensive plans for the private sector to build more housing. This is hard for neighbors to accept. They don't want their communities to change, but they are changing. They're changing in ways that isolate and exclude people. And we need to say, no, we want to have inclusive communities. And if that means that I got to have a duplex next door, great, more neighbors, right? So everything from market-rate housing and zoning, subsidies are needed for housing, and we need special homelessness and low-income housing that's subsidized by government. So it's kind of all of the above, and we're working on every piece of it right now. By the way, the state is being very helpful these days. The state has passed a number of excellent pieces of legislation that are pushing this issue forward because it's become an issue affecting the entire state's economy. So lots of work to be done.
Artificial intelligence, AI, is changing value chains for creative content from start to finish, which is having positive and negative impacts on society. Additionally, augmented virtual reality, AR and VR, can transform storytelling in a way that content is experienced, but business incentives to do so are not fully aligned with the individual's well-being. Where do you fall on the AI, AR, VR debate right now?
Well, just, I'm firmly on the side of the humans. I just want to say that right up front. When the machines become sentient, I'll be with the humans. But seriously, seriously. So absolutely, technology can be beneficial, right? Technology can be wonderful. In, in East King County, we have a project that I was part of helping to start to honor the Japanese-American legacy in Bellevue. And as, one of the people who was part of it as an artist, who made this incredible piece called Emerging Radiance. It's a, it's a hut, it's a farming hut, an actual farming hut, with paintings of farms and faces on the sides of people who were real people who lived through incarceration. And it had AR/VR elements where you could put your smartphone up to it and hear their voices. From the Den Show Memory Project, you could hear their voices telling their stories. It was powerful. It is powerful. We're going to find a permanent space for it. It's powerful. However, we also know that technology runs ahead of our ability to understand the ramifications and certainly ahead of where the law is at. And so we, we know that there is a need for regulation. We know that we have to make sure that the beneficial uses are encouraged, but that we get ahead of potential harmful fraud is one concern. You know, people losing the ability to earn their creative products is a very large concern. It says something to me that the big tech companies want regulation, like, they're all out talking to congressional representatives and the state saying, please regulate us, because they want a level playing field and they want to, you know, it to be predictable. At King County, we've called out Councilmember Colwell a number of times, I'll call her out tonight, and say that she introduced a bill that we passed that I voted for to, to say that King County would not use facial recognition because of, you know, there had been studies showing that facial recognition can be very, it misrecognizes people with darker skin tones, and it's been associated with a lot of inequity in how it's used. So we said, we're not going to use it. And we're not going to allow our police department to use it, the sheriff's office. So we, we try to keep up with technology, but it is, I mean, that was, that was two years ago. Facial recognition was the big thing. And nobody's talking about it anymore because now we're all talking about AI. Tech moves fast, so we have to move fast as well. I don't have a great answer for King County, but I know that it's something that we need to be very much on top of and look at and talk to our state and federal partners about.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Balducci. And I give it back to Manny.
All right, I really love that in this last segment that we actually were able to highlight, I hope I'm not wrong, the artist Michelle Camada and her beautiful artwork. I should have said Michelle Camada. Thank you for doing that. Absolutely. I love Michelle Camada. I've had the opportunity to work with her a number of times. Let's give this segment another round of applause. All right, our final district this evening is District Eight. This diverse community includes West Seattle, Vashon Island, White Center, Georgetown, and Burien. I'd like to welcome our District Eight captain, Anna Maria Campoy. Anna Maria is a theater artist, an educator, an advocate. She works as an educator, adapter, director, and performer. At the center of her work lives the driving desire to create opportunities for artists of color, to remove economic and geographical barriers for audiences and students, and to expand and deepen our American identity. In addition to her work within the arts, she founded, and now, oh, my eyesight, runs the Volunteer Collective, Wash Masks Mutual Aid to Provide PPE Support and Advocacy for migrant and seasonal farmworkers and their families in Washington State. Let's please warm up the stage for my dear friend, Anna Maria.
Hello, good evening. This one first is, we'll go first to Councilmember Mosquera and then candidate Aragon. How do you think the creative economy is connected to social services, housing, public health, and public safety within District Eight in King County? How do you drive deeper investment? Where is arts and cultural funding on your list of priorities? Where do you rank it, especially in years where there are pushes for budget cuts?
Oh, my goodness. I love that question, and it includes everything. Thank you for asking that question. And I would note, I think we're in District Eight right now. I've seen documentaries here, I've seen plays here, I've seen people put on incredible performances here. And I appreciate all the art that was Sarah mentioned in District Four. But I want to note Georgetown with Equinox. We have West Seattle with the arts, the, thank you. Vashon Island, which just feels like it's year-round. We have incredible artist shows and opportunities for youth engagement, as well in Pioneer Square and with the youth art programming that occurs, and in White Center, and in Burien, and in Takwila. It is an incredible opportunity to represent this district and to lift up the investments in art. I think that investments in art are actually a preventative public health intervention strategy. We talked a little bit about public safety and community health at the beginning. When we invest more in programming for youth and kiddos and, and young adults, it's a strategy to get people more engaged in their community, productive members of their community. It creates an outlet and a channel. And when funding is at risk, or there's other pressing priorities, we should be prioritizing art. That is what I did as budget chair. In 2021 and 2022, we said, as part of our economic recovery, we will invest in art. I put $6 million in the budget last year, $3 million in the budget in 2021 because it is a strategy for a more equitable economy. We invested money directly in for a creative art wall, called the graffiti wall, so that kiddos and youth who are engaged in art, street art, have a safe and legal place to go to use that creative outlet. We created more opportunities for programming with organizations that are directly led by communities of color and working with youth now so that there was strategies to have more creative and productive engagement with youth. That is a really good way to ensure that youth don't engage with the criminal justice system to begin with. We think about investments in the most critical and pressing issue that Claudia Balducci noted, housing. Well, housing can be coupled with art opportunities, small spaces on the first and second floors, just like I did at the Filipino Community Center, and just like I included in the housing levy that's up in November, and in Jumpstart Progressive Payroll Tax. Yes, funding is limited, absolutely. But in every single aspect, we should be looking through a public health lens. And when we do so, art and the creative economy and investment in the creators and artists, that is where we should be putting funding so that it fuels funding or fuels creative strategies throughout, and it creates ripple effects that benefit individual health and economic well-being, as well as population health and the greater economy as well. It is absolutely tied into every aspect of public policy if we do it right and prioritize it.
Well, and thank you very much. I think this really highlights the geographic and cultural diversity in District Eight. So this is an overlapping district that has both unincorporated parts, as we've mentioned. So that's White Center as well as Vashon. We have City, the City of Seattle, parts of it. And then we also have a different city, Burien, as well as Takwila. And they all have their different characteristics and highlights, and as we grow, we want to be able to highlight all of those. So in terms of Burien, though, a good example is being proud to support a new creative district in the city, and it is being embedded in our, in our comprehensive plan that's coming up. And it includes downtown, and we were making sure that it includes one of the areas of former unincorporated King County that has historically faced some inequities. And so just drawing that in and making sure that that is going to be part of how we build out the creative district is really important. So in terms of social services, we do have a higher poverty rate, and this is for the City of Burien and as well as White Center. And we have local groups like Parlos Ninos, including social services, really want to engage our kids. So when I'm going around talking with families, they just want their kids to be really productive in ways that they can learn, and the arts is definitely one of those. Public safety is really key for people to feel that they can access the arts. Burien is one of those towns that's highly walkable. We want to make sure that people from Seattle, so we have a new rapid ride installed, that taking the bus, that hour-long ride, however, much more efficient than it used to be, taking the bus, that hour-long ride, however, much more efficient than it used to be, that they can feel safe coming back and forth from Burian and Seattle and that we can be connected. Public health is absolutely essential. And what this will do now, a lot of kids in the High Line District, which covers a lot of the areas, they, as you know, suffered a lot of inequities during the pandemic. And this is a way to really address some of the stressors that they've had and find a way of self-expression and growth and reconnection with others. So that's what I'm excited about the arts to do for those kids. So basic infrastructure, however, like broadband, right, is absolutely necessary for kids to engage like that. And then another thing about economic development, it was a great opportunity, the creative district, to have partners like the Seattle South Side Chamber of Commerce to partner with our artists and our small businesses to help our creative economy grow in the city.
Thank you. Beginning first time with candidate Aragon and then Councilmember Mosquera. How do you define the arts and cultural sector and why is it essential to District Eight? What organizations do you participate or experience arts and culture within District Eight?
I mentioned there's a few cities in there.
Yep, yep.
So and the other thing, and I'm glad I was be able to follow up, because King County is really key as an umbrella organization to all the great cities that are in King County, right? And so we have this great opportunity to really bind us together. We have more population, and with the transportation conversation is really critical. And I must say, for Vashon, the ferry system is also very critical. I know that that is mainly a state issue, but King County, with its clout and its influence, really also needs to support that community so people can help it grow and our populations can move back and forth. So what organizations I've been engaged in? Well, and I think about how mainly I've been a consumer, Seattle Opera, the Seattle Symphony. What's really been important with my family is the West Seattle Community Orchestra. So that's a local orchestra in West Seattle. It was really mainly to get my stepdaughter. She's a, she plays violin. And she was privileged enough, unlike me, I learned the violin in public school. That was fine. And, you know, I'm proud to be, you know, first-chair, second violin. That's my proud moment as being a kid. And so I said, you know what? You need to go beyond the soloist thing and try an orchestra. And that really laid the groundwork that, to my surprise, I would have never known that she is now in the orchestra in college. So it's really incredible. And I must say, she and I, they also recruited me to be her chair partner. She and I were first-chair, first violin in Whisko- now, and which was a moment, you know, a proud statement in my life, but for a week, because then COVID came and we had to suspend all those things. Yes, I know. I'm just really sad about that. The other thing, Shakespeare in the Park. Okay, the other thing, amazing thing King County does is make sure that our parks remain healthy and our green space, right, which is really essential to the environment. And parks are a huge place where we also experience art. So Shakespearean Park and the West Seattle Community Orchestra also actually plays in the parks in the summertime, like in Lincoln Park, which is really amazing. And other things too, is I just want to say that I think King County being at the table, just seeing how we can all elevate each other's uniqueness geographically and culturally, and how can we do that? So our largest population in the city of Burian, for example, it's the Hispanic population. I don't think that's elevated enough, and this could be a huge draw for the rest of King County to come if we can only elevate that with the assistance of the county. And I had mentioned before Wing Luke, the International District, and one of the, and they're prided in one of the oldest cultural districts. Also, we have a lot of work to do in helping them elevate what they have to offer.
Thank you.
I heard the question about the names of orgs, but do you mind repeating the other part of the question?
Yes. How do you define the arts and cultural sector and why it is essential to District Eight? And what organizations do you participate or experience arts and culture within District Eight?
Excellent. Thank you so much. Well, I feel like this might be a trick question because I feel like the arts and cultural sector is actually the heart of how we create a more equitable economy, how we restart the economy. And the way that I define arts and culture is pretty broadly. When we put funding in from the American Rescue Plan Act and the COVID local relief funds, we put it in directly for artists as they defined it, which could have been somebody who does painting, somebody who does dancing, somebody who has an art studio. It can be any form of art and creativity. We called it specifically in the statute, the creative sector, to try to reflect the language that artists themselves were telling us they needed, broad language to broadly reflect that there's many ways that people engage in the creative economy, and they wanted additional assistance, basically weathering the impact of COVID. I mentioned the dollar impact within the first year, but some of the other statistics that we know from the U.S. Census Bureau is that the creative economy, which also includes culinary art and various forms of installation art, it is, it was hardest hit during the beginning of the pandemic, and the U.S. Census Bureau is continuing to put out reports to say it will take the longest to recover. So for me, that's why I said that it's at the heart of economic recovery, investing in arts and culture and our creative economy is how we invest in a more equitable and thriving and inclusive economy for all. The artists and the organizations that I've worked with, I'll just name a few. I had the chance to visit with Sam from Equinox. If you haven't been to Equinox and Equinox, yes, Equinox Studios down in Georgetown. It is a growing and thriving area that they've created more spaces, studios for artists of all kinds, whether it's welders or painters, installation artists who are local and national. And they are branching out to create housing, housing for artists to be coupled with first and second floor opportunities to create art on site. I've worked for many years with Jake Prendes and Judy, his wife, at Napantla Arts Gallery. Napantla, yes. And I went to school with Jake. We were machistas at the University of Washington. And to see the national recognition for Chicano artists who is based right in District Eight makes me very proud of White Center. I'm very excited as well about the work that we've been able to do with urban artworks in Soto, Pioneer Square, investments in youth artists, folks of color working on murals and various creative ways to engage in art. It's throughout District Eight. I think there's opportunities to do more by directly investing in those who've been weathering this storm of COVID and frankly have been underinvested in for years prior. It's an exciting opportunity to think about how we could learn from the pandemic because, again, this is how we get people out, post, I'm going to put that in quotes, post and ongoing pandemic to create greater social cohesion and improve the health and well-being of everyone.
For my final question, what communities within District Eight do you wish to increase access, experiences, and participation in arts and culture, including youth, elders, global majority communities, our unhoused neighbors, and the diverse languages within District Eight? Yes.
Okay. Well, one night I was laying there thinking about transportation in the middle of the night, and I was thinking, yes, as one does, and I was thinking, we talk a lot about all ages and abilities. And I laid there, it was about 2:00 in the morning, and I thought, no, it's actually this word, alegra, right, which in Spanish means happy. Alegra, all ages, languages, abilities, genders, race, ethnicities, and ages. That's what I want to think of when we think of inclusive creative sector and how we can engage more with getting more people into the arts. Some folks today have talked about how their kiddos or their family has engaged in art. And I put this in my questionnaire. I didn't have a TV until I was 15 at our house, and I thought it was a real hardship. But you know what? We did art. And just today, I left my house and my four-year-old, we were doing art to hang on the wall for Halloween. Every month, there was new art projects that we would be engaged in in my home to try to, you know, integrate art and not actually just sit in front of the television. I would love for us to be able to think of the alegra model when we think about how we engage folks, whether it's youth or seniors. My mom and I used to do pottery class together when I was younger, and I was thinking, how wonderful would it be able to be that, be able to do that with her now. Intergenerational art activities is something that I used to participate in when I worked at C-Mark Community Health Centers, and I worked in the Latino Senior Program there. We did art projects with kiddos in the senior center. It is good for the mental health to see that types of social interaction, and it's good as well also for the creative element of keeping people vibrant and engaged across the age spectrum. And as my colleagues have noted, my colleagues have noted, it's about also making sure that it's inclusive. Often when we engage in public policy, the language that we use can be exclusionary. You think about how we talk about housing or transportation, it's alphabet soup. What I want to do is create the opportunity for us to be really inclusive, both culturally and linguistically inclusive, but also broadening out the opportunities for us to bring more people into the arts and culture, to make it, to dispel it if you're not already involved or haven't had familial connections that have brought you in in the past. These organizations, both that King County can fund and local jurisdictions, they have trusted relationships on the ground. We need to be doing more to encourage investment into those local organizations because they already have the connection, and we could be growing the arts and cultural programming by direct investments with those who already have relationships in our community.
And as I mentioned, in the South County, we often have communities that have less resources than other parts of the county. So while there's a special eye towards that population, I really do think that all of the groups that you mentioned have to have access to art. Everybody does. It's just really foundational, just as my parents have taught me. And really, when we talk about the different communities in the county, they also need to be brought in, and we need to ask them, they need, we need to be informed about what is it that they bring to the table to their own community in terms of arts and culture? How can we help elevate that? What's the gaps? What has happened to you since the pandemic and how it can help you rebuild? And then another way of thinking is, so I think about the county as really providing really four essential things. And I think what's really important is how do we build in, bake in the arts and culture into all of those four things? And I think about the parks. So I gave you an example about Shakespeare in the Park, that West Seattle Community Orchestra performs in the park. I think about Marymore Park, right, that park over there that has really those wonderful shows. And to me, it's like, so transportation, so we want access to all of the uniqueness around King County. So is our transportation accessible? Does it get us to where we need to go? How does that help support all of the cultural venues and experiences and tie them together so someone in Burian can enjoy easily something in Bellevue or something even on the north sound there? And then public health, as we mentioned before, we really need to build ways that people can find expression in themselves to really experience other cultures that they may not be able to in their immediate neighborhood. And also for our mental health crisis, this essentially is a really key piece and that we need to grow. And then finally, public safety, which goes hand in hand with all of these things. Do people feel safe everywhere they go to access the cultural experiences? Are actually cultural venues, restaurants, eateries, theaters, do they feel like that the public safety situation around them is keeping people away? And if so, we need to address that.
Thank you.
All right. At this point, it is your opportunity to ask questions of the candidates. So thank you so much for bringing the lights up. We have a short period of time for this section, but we welcome anyone who has a question for District Four candidates. Please come on up to the microphone.
Hello. My name is Grace Liotti. I'm a second-year graduate student at U-Dub in the museology program. So I'm thinking about museums and the cultural sector all of the time, and I've worked in museums for a number of years, mostly art museums. And I think that there is still a sort of way of thinking in the museum world, particularly in art museums, that because staff have access, this sort of close access to cultural treasures, that they sort of give up having livable wages, having good benefits, and support from their institutions. And I've worked in tons of different museum departments, all the way from curation to frontline staff as a security guard in an art museum. So I care about this very deeply. And you both touched on providing more funding and more diverse forms of funding to cultural institutions in District Four so that they can continue providing access to the public. But I'm also wondering about what is possible at a policy level to support the staff there directly so that turnover isn't as high and people have the resources and support they need to continue offering the arts and culture to Seattle's community.
Thank you. Who would like to take that first? Candidate Barone?
Oh, sure. Well, thank you for that question. I think that is absolutely the way that we need to be thinking about it because we need to put people first, right? I think in terms of every area of work that we do in this community, we need to make sure that people have a living wage and that people that are providing services in every sector can live in the community that they serve. And I think that's really important. And I do think that governments have an important responsibility to make sure that we are creating a situation where you provide incentives for organizations, nonprofit organizations that are receiving government funding to be able to do that. I can tell you that, you know, I was, as I mentioned earlier, I was working in the nonprofit sector and recently where we have these pressures. And it takes, you know, people who are committed to making sure that the work is done and that we engage with people in our workforce to make sure of providing livable wages for folks. I can tell, for example, at the work that I did on Northwest Minneapolis Project, when I entered my position, our lowest-paid employee was being, was paid less than $15 an hour. By the time I left, it was over $35 an hour. And that takes, that takes work, but it also takes engagement. It takes the fact that, you know, I also acknowledge we're a unionized organization, and that was a significant factor in that, in making sure that we're promoting that as an opportunity for workers to advocate for themselves. But the other thing is that I saw as a nonprofit leader how sometimes we would get pressures from government officials to lower our costs. I literally had, for example, at some point when we were applying for a government grant, somebody tell me, you know, your cost per service is too high. And my response to that was, yes, it is, because we're trying to make sure that people are compensated well for providing those services. And I do think that sometimes from the government try to relies on the nonprofit sector to sort of be able to pay less and create this sort of pressure among different nonprofits who are competing for funding and try to essentially cut corners. And I think that's really problematic, and it requires us, all of us, to push back, and it requires people on the public sector and the funders to make sure that we're creating incentives, to make sure that we actually incentivize and reward organizations that are actually providing a livable wage, that are providing strong benefits, and that we provide also supports, like I talked about before, in terms of like providing affordable housing so that people, artists and other workers at cultural institutions can live affordably, providing affordable childcare so that those folks can also make sure they have access to that. So all of those need to be part of the equation when we're talking about supporting arts and cultural organizations, as well as the entire rest of the economy locally.
Yeah, I think that's a really excellent question, and thank you so much for your dedication to the arts and culture and everything you do to increase access to the arts and museums in our community. I think there's a misnomer, particularly in the artistic community. I wanted to grow up and be a dancer, that if you work in the artistic community, that it's a labor of love and that you're not going to be making living wage and that you're not going to be afforded the same opportunities as some others in our community. That is wrong. That needs to change. That is something that's distinct to the U.S. That is not something in Europe and other countries. And we need to make sure that we're investing in the arts with that ongoing institutional support that we talked about before, to ensure that everyone that works in the arts and culture, including someone that works at, you know, the Frye or the Seattle Art Museum or whatever the museum is, has access to living wage jobs, that you have access to housing and opportunities to thrive in our communities. So when I was an Assistant Attorney General, I still am, and we were really struggling with just having living wage jobs and living in King County, you know, we unionized our workforce. And I absolutely think that unionization and the power of collective bargaining is so critically important in every sector of our economy. And I know that there's parts of the creative economy that are unionized, but I think that we need more opportunities, really, to ensure that we're unionizing the workforce throughout our creative economies, you know, and looking at really ensuring that we are ensuring the institutional support. So we talked a little bit about that, and cultural access is critically important. But also, I think we need more investment from our private sectors as well in the arts community. We need our technology community to step up. We need our government, both in King County through cultural access, but also our federal government and our state government, to step up and truly fund cultural institutions to make sure that those that are working at every part of our cultural institutions and are really providing our communities with these opportunities to engage in the arts and culture are elevated. And so having that conversation, I think countywide from a regional perspective, what is it really going to take for us to pay everyone that works in the arts and culture a living wage so that they don't have to sacrifice for something that they love? What is it going to take to expand access to housing, as we were talking about before, including more subsidized housing? I mean, we have some great opportunities through transit-oriented development to create more artists' housing, even in the Fourth Council District. And what is it going to take to provide those vital social services? The other thing I want to talk about is healthcare and childcare, right? So I want to be a partner in this work. Thank you so much for what you're doing for our cultural economy and for communities throughout King County.
Thank you. Next up, I welcome a question for District Six. District Six, yes, please.
Hi, my name is Carol. Carol Roundtree. You see, I have a problem blocking speaking. I'm a stroke, a few years ago. I've been, I've been a stroke, I was a mess. I almost died, I didn't die. I'm a poet, a legal writer, and I sing very well, you know. I have a band called Skinks. I have, I have, I have mother twins, they're beautiful. Hello, Miami. How's your day been? I said, they're very tall. I'm probably, I'm 40 years old. The question to all of you guys is, Ms. Balducci, Claudia, I assume, and the doctor, nurse, the good person here in the yellow, and Miss Pink Person, I'm sorry, and Mr. Carvera, all of you. When you say immersion, all people, all the arts, I sing very well. I can give a nurse, I can give a man. So how do you mean, like, do you mean immersion of all people? I'm a person too. I'm, I'm, I laugh, I cry, sing, I sing. Anyways, I'll talk about, I'll sing my songs. Mr. Carvera, to you specifically, you took, I'm from Miami. No, I was born in Boston, went to Miami, Florida, and then came, I came to here. My last stop is here, my very last stop. I'm too old, I have nowhere here. So, oh, lady, I have bad heart, and so, anyways. My question to you was, when you mean full immersion, any publicly treasure, even money, homes, housing, medication for, I have problems, I can't, I'm a, I'm a seizure, but I can't control, I take medications, and I don't take no CBD, no bad business. So to you the question, Ms. Balducci, first seriously, Ms. Balducci, to you particularly, when you say immersion of all people, do you, like, me? I go to opera, I go to theatre, I go to Sam, I go to Frye Museum, I'm, I'm, I'm a P W. a P W, and the, the first wars, my dad was a big Navy guy, he died at home, he's very old, he died, big liver cancer, he was a very handsome man, I have crazy hair. So we specifically, get down to the dirt, money talks, all walks, as he's saying is, I'll show you here, I have money, let's see, money over here, money talks, all walks, as a girl. So you mean inclusion, for all of us person, you all carry me right, Miss Butter, her big person, and you're there, like, Miss, people who are, who are spoken better than I am, speaking. How do you mean inclusion? Specifically, it's down to dirt, I mean, in any degree of dirt, of inclusion, chance, I take, I take a car call, they can be banned, access banned to wherever I go, and they're getting around town, you have a legal way, I go to Walmart, I go to, went to the Frye Museum, I concert, always have, people have Albanian singers, Croatian people, I'm being for a job downtown, France, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a, calm you down, as you can tell, shock is very good for antoxins, I'm very intelligent, very legal, went to Miami to community college, but I haven't, I haven't got a paying to go on. See, I haven't got a bachelor's degree yet, my son, he's very, hello, man, yeah, I passed a law degree, big deal, he's very handsome, my, his son, I'm Travis, he's a Travis too. But I'm divorced now. The question to you is, the question is to which, inclusion, do you mean, I rise to people, they have the fest, I've been down to the, I got, one question specifically, how do you mean inclusion? For getting there, having housing and medication, I tried to take it unfortunately for a lifetime. I have chronic test problems, as you can tell, I have other chronic problems.
Yeah.
What do you mean, Ms. Balducci? You speak first, please.
Yeah, happy to, thank you. And so I heard that was a very big question. What is inclusion, right? Like, it's a big question.
Big, gigantic question.
So to me, what it means to be inclusive when we're talking about arts and culture is that people can get from where they are, where they live, to the experience, to the facility, to the event, whatever it is, you have a way to get there. If you can't drive, if you take transit, it should be readily available to you. You should be able to afford to ride it. It should get you where you need to go. When you get to the place itself, you should know about it. Inclusion means information so that people know what's going on and they, hey, there's this thing, and I could partake in it. It means you can get in the door. It means that prices aren't a barrier to people coming in the door. It means the event itself is, as much as possible, done in a way that everybody can enjoy it, that there's, you know, accessible, we've looped our chambers, for example, there's accessible to people with hearing needs or different languages or whatever, right? That there are, that there is a wide variety of experiences that are in all different cultures. I mean, we have hundreds of languages spoken around King County, and we have all these different cultures. And so we want to have a, we want, like, not every single event can be in every single language or culture, but we want a system that brings everybody in and binds us to each other and gives, so that, that's what I mean when I say inclusive, is that the barriers to participating are overcome and that you're invited and you know you can come, like you came tonight, right? And that you can, but that you can go to all types of different, yeah.
ABC plan in motion, yeah, somewhere you're back, you're burning a fire, burning, she's breaking poetry. Do they plan in motion, plan?
So, yeah, is there a plan in motions?
A, B, C, D.
Yep, heard that. So let me, let me say that when we talk about the cultural access district and tax that we're talking about voting on this year at the King County Council, a large part of that is for access. A large part of that is to make sure that people all over King County can afford to go to these great cultural institutions, that there are free days, that there's reduced entry fees. A large part of it is for transportation. We're going to make sure kids are being bussed into the city to see things that are not available where they come from. So that, that, you know, there's a, it's very detailed, and I could not quote it all to you from memory, so I can't do A, B, C, D. I did A and B. But, but there's, but, but access is a really, really key part of Kawa, yeah.
We're going to move to the next district. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
And we look forward to talking more of this after the event. And our last question for District Eight. Anyone have a question for District Eight?
I have a question for all of us.
Oh, come on, yeah, come on up, yeah.
I'm shy, I'm sorry.
And you live in District Eight, I know that. We've gone on walks.
Actually, I do. No, I.
Because we did a question for all of you, I'm only giving two minutes this time.
I'll be quick. Thank you all for what you stated. It's just, I have really a question. How are, how are you all going to address the perception that especially the nonprofit institutions are not business? I went to an event of the Chamber of Commerce last week, was it this week or last week? I don't remember, too many things. And what absolutely infuriated me is that nobody, other than the CEO of Starbucks, mentioned Symphony Opera and arts in general, nobody else. There was a big kind of rah-rah about how wonderful they did and what all the businesses did, and isn't it great? I actually walked up afterwards to Rachel Smith, I think she must hate me, but it's okay. And I very much frankly accosted her, and I said, "This is not okay. We're members of this organization, we are businesses, we, small organizations, small arts organizations are as important as the large ones. We all together are an ecosystem that need to exist, that need to support, not only create access, we first of all need to survive." And the business community here doesn't even acknowledge that we are a business, even if we are nonprofit. So there's a perception, and also consequently by the general audience, that we're just asking for money for no good reason. I mean, I'm, I'm the general director of the Seattle Opera, and we employ about 600 to 700 people over the course of the year, which is not Starbucks, it's not Amazon, I know that. But put them all together, even the small organizations that employ three, to the ones that employ many, like Symphony and the opera and ballet, we are all needed. How are you going, how are you going to address the perception in the business community, in this city, and also among the citizens at large, that we are not a business? Because frankly, this has to stop, because we provide too much business, direct and indirect, to this community. If we go away, good luck reactivating downtown Seattle.
Would, would you, who would like to start? Yes, please.
I can start that. Well, I think, first of all, I'm a nonprofit director. My day job is the executive director of the Washington Center for Nursing. And under state statute, we actually receive license fees from nurses to support us. Now, because of the, what COVID did to wreak havoc in the system, I didn't see funding for six months. And it was my diligent, my organization's diligent saving and sticking to the gold standard of reserves that nonprofits strive for, that we were able to do that. When Mr. Barone talked about, in terms of pressures when you're under a grant to spend, I think sometimes those are unreasonable. So I think of the county as an entity that may award grants to really essential organizations. And one of the things that I'd like to see is that makes sure it's not too administratively burdensome. So here's an example from my part of the world, is like, a federal HERSA grant is so burdensome that I'm not even going to bother to apply. The other thing too is that King County, I think overall, there needs to be a good business advisory presence in King County, and nonprofits definitely need to be a seat at the table. So I think those are two really important ways, is making sure your electives have an appreciation of nonprofits, better if they're parts of one and know how ones work. And also with the many advisory bodies that we have in King Council, that we intentionally include that sector along with the business community to make sure that we know that we all have a shared responsibility to make sure that we uphold the culture and arts in the county.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for this question, and I love that you walked Rachel out. I cannot wait to hear more about that, because I think that's a good first start.
I'm in trouble.
I think that's great. It's advocacy in all different forms so that we can continue to change perception. You know, the survey that I mentioned earlier from the U.S. Census Bureau, that actually came from the U.S. Census Bureau's Small Business Pulse Survey. So the federal government is analyzing the impact on the arts culture through the business component of the Census Department. And I think that that should be an indication for all of us, that we should be looking at arts and culture and business investments altogether. One of the things that I tried to do to make sure that we saw both arts and culture and small business, and frankly, you know, activation of businesses, all in the same vein, was through the Jump Start Progressive Payroll Tax that I championed, we have over $250 million a year. Of that, we earmarked $20 million each year, so last year's biennial budget, $40 million, and we said for economic resilience. We didn't say just business or for profit. Economic resilience intentionally includes activation of public spaces, activation of storefronts, public art in, on our community, and making sure that we have restorative models for making it possible for more people to keep their businesses open, whether it's a nonprofit or not. So integrating them and seeing it through the same lens is a good start. Lastly, I would just say that we need to continue to invest directly. As we have this conversation to try to change the culture and perception, frankly, public art should be a public good and an investment in all its forms. And so we'll continue, I think, as government leaders, to make those direct investments, but we need to be changing the culture and the narrative along with you. My hope is that when we talk about economic resilience and the creative industry, and we use those terms, it changes the norms and changes the perception and then changes behavior. Thank you for your work.
Thank you. Yes.
So I'm going to, I'm going to abuse the privilege and take the opportunity to answer both of the questions I didn't get to answer. So with regard to workforce, first of all, we traffic in this business in catchy phrases, and you inspired a new one. I'm going to say, "You can't eat antiquities," right? But we encountered this exact problem in the human services field. And it was especially poignant because King County government employs people who do the same work as people who work in the nonprofit in that field. And it was very obvious, we pay our employees quite well, and we give them really good benefits and a retirement package. I mean, like, we, the nonprofit employees got virtually none of that. And so we're working on pay equity in that field, and I think it's a new idea right here, right now, but I want to think about what you said, as we adopt a new major funding source, can we use that as leverage to also start looking at funding and pay in this sector? Because we used our funding in the human services sector to drive better wages. So thank you for that. I just want to say thank you for that concept. And other big, big thinking ideas, like, there are many studies, I believe Seattle did one that showed that arts and culture are an economic multiplier, that they're, not only are you businesses, you drive business to other businesses. And I want to say that the City of Seattle studies showed that it was like a three-times multiplier, like, for everybody who comes in and buys a ticket to the opera, they, you know, you see three times that value in other spending. So that's, and I think, I hope the business community is aware of this, but again, I will say, I will say in my experience, geographically-based business groups are keenly aware of it. The Bellevue Downtown Association is keenly aware of the fact that nonprofits and cultural organizations are part of their economy. And so I just want to suggest that maybe there are spaces that are more open to that way of thinking than the one that you mentioned, that I won't, I won't name. So however, again, as government invests, as you all fundraise and do your own investments, which you do, we should use our economic power to leverage business support as well, because that's three legs of the stool that makes something really viable. And I'd be happy to be engaged in conversations like that.
Well, as a nonprofit leader, until recently, I very much relate to that because the conversations that I have with folks in the for-profit sector definitely left me discouraged in terms of like how they viewed the, those of us that work in the nonprofit sector. And for me, I think a couple of things that come to mind. So first of all, is using the platform of being, you know, on, in elected office to make the case and to share some of the information. And Manny, I'm trying to remember, but I think the statistic is that the creative economy in the state of Washington is something like 11% of the GDP.
10.8%.
Okay, I got it off by point two.
Yep.
But I rounded it up.
Yep.
And I think, and I think that's for the state, and I think if you think of a place like King County, I'm sure the percentage is actually higher.
We're in Seattle.
Thank you, there you go. So we have like the expertise in the room here, so. And so I think highlighting that, because I think for most people in the community, that's, that's something that they might find surprising, that that's the level. And I think folks in the business community continue to raise those issues. But again, going back to the point that we made earlier about how then government can treat the nonprofit institutions, you know, the same way that it treats and responds to the pressures from the private sector. And how I see it, for example, I know, for example, you see with Sound Transit, right? Like the response that people are having to the demands that entities like Amazon or Vulcan are doing on Sound Transit, do they have the same level of responsiveness to the nonprofit community and to those institutions and to the pressures, right? I think we need to balance that field and need to have folks who have, for my part, as somebody who comes from that sector, from the nonprofit sector, I'm going to try to use my platform to raise that issue of the challenges that those of us in that field have experienced and the important role that it plays in our entire community in addressing the, both essential services, including culture and arts, which I consider part of our essential services in our community.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think this is a great question. When I was president of the Graduate and Professional Student Senate, and we were having a hard time communicating to the business community the value added of investing in graduate and professional degrees to derive our economy, we created and convened a summit where we brought all of the business community, including many of them, including Brad Smith at the time, not Rachel Smith, but Brad Smith, to the table, and we provided them with education on the value added of graduate and professional degrees and creating jobs and driving our economy across Washington State. And if elected to the King County Council, I want to do the same thing. I want to convene a cultural and arts summit where we bring not just the business communities, but the communities across King County to the table and really talk about these statistics that we have been mentioning around how arts and culture and how our nonprofit organizations generate jobs, create equitable access to opportunity, and drive our cultural economy in King County and across Washington State. And I think we need at that point to really ensure that we are committing, that we are having some commitments from our private sector, to really partner with our creative economy and the Seattle Museum and the Seattle Opera and Pacific Northwest Ballet, in investing in the future of the arts and creative economy. So I would love to convene that summit. I also think we need an education campaign across King County on the value of arts and culture and driving the creative economy and an equitable future for all our communities. And I look forward to continuing this conversation. But thank you so much for the excellent question and the work you do.
All right. What an amazing evening. Inspire Washington is so grateful to all of you for sharing your stories and your passions and your perspectives on arts and cultural work. We know that you're going to be out in community over the next couple of months. When you're out in community, survey the cultural businesses that are around, call them out. And also, please keep sharing more about what you believe in and the policies that you would like to push when you are elected into office. And this is what we need from you, audience members. We had a great conversation. This link will be available for streaming, share it. Let's all work really hard to make sure we share this conversation with the rest of our community, 10, 15, 20 people. Post it on your social media, let's get lots of views. The cultural conversation is a very important one in this upcoming election, and let's all be partners in promoting that. Inspire Washington is so grateful to all of the organizations that invested in our work and have provided this important educational event for you tonight. Let's give them a round of applause and thank you.